Okay, are we ready to start? Okay. Okay, it's now 7:30 PM. And I would like to call the Special Planning Commission meeting of January 12th, 2021 to order. We're continuing to have our meeting in a virtual setting to ensure the health and safety of the public by limiting human contact that could spread the COVID-19 virus. The council chambers are closed. Planning commissioners, city attorney, and staff are all participating remotely. This meeting may be viewed live on the city's website. In an effort to best facilitate dialogue and discussion, I'm going to ask that the planning commission be mindful of muting their microphones when not speaking. I will call on commissioners to speak on each item one by one. If you want to speak at a different time, please feel free to raise your hand and you will then be called on. I thank you all for your patience as we proceed with our meeting today. First, we'll have a roll call. I'll just note who is with us right now. Staff, please note that the following individuals are present. Commissioner Dahl is not present now because she will, she needed to recuse herself from the first item on the agenda, but she will join us after item one. Commissioner Tom is present. Commissioner Padilla is present. She will also need to recuse herself for item number one. The recusals are due to the fact that they live within a 1,000-foot radius of the project in question. Vice Chair Lisa is here. And I, Commissioner Braun, I am also present. Our council liaison, Mayor Mahmoud, is with us. City Attorney Carrie Highsmith and Planning Community Development Director Joanna Hennheimer. And Kamika, and Melinda Lim from the city staff. Yes, Kamika.
Here, Braun, I just wanted to correct the statement about why Commissioner Dahl's recuse from the project is not because of location, but because of her husband, it's the architect on the project for.
Okay, thank you for that correction. So Commissioner Padilla is recusing herself because she lives within a thousand-foot radius of the project. And Commissioner Dahl has a spouse who is the architect on the project. Thank you. Okay. Um, next, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. So commissioners and staff, do you have any requests for additions or revisions to the agenda? So please raise your hand. And I don't see any requests, so I'd like a vote of the commission to proceed with approval of the agenda as submitted. Quick, quick roll call. Commissioner Tom?
Hi.
Commissioner Padilla? Hi, okay. Vice Chair Lisa?
Hi.
And yes, I also approve the agenda as submitted. So, great, let's move on to disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts. Any disclosure of any site visits or ex parte contact for items on today's agenda? Commissioner Padilla? No. How about Commissioner Tom?
No, although for items two and three, we have had subcommittee having meetings concerning the items there. But I don't think those are even expertises. I just wanted to say that we have had those meetings.
Vice Chair Lisa?
No, I've had none.
And myself, I've also had none. So, thank you for that. Next, we're moving on to public comment. The planning commission welcomes public input. Members of the public were asked to email any comments to planningcomments@southpasadenaca.gov or by calling 626-403-7720 and leaving a three-minute voicemail message to be played during the meeting. The submittal deadline for public comments was noon today. Pursuant to state law, this commission may not discuss or take action on issues not on the agenda, except that members of the planning commission or staff may briefly respond to statements made or questions. Staff may be asked to follow up on such items. Staff, did we receive any public comments or suggestions on matters not on the agenda?
I'm sure we did not receive any general public comments for this agenda.
We'll now proceed to the public hearing. Before we begin with the public hearing, I want to note that any public comments on the agenda items were asked to be sent to the email address mentioned, just mentioned, or by calling and leaving a voicemail by noon today. Any comments received will posted on the website as additional documents and shall become part of the record for this meeting. Following the staff report and applicant's presentation, I will ask staff to call the applicant for a five-minute rebuttal. Um, the first, so the first public hearing item is for a project at 807 Rollin'. Commissioner Padilla will now be leaving us. She is recused from this item. And she will return after this item. And Commissioner Dahl is not currently with us. So they are both recused. So do we have a staff report on this item?
Yes, ma'am, Chair, we do. Melinda will play the presentation. And I would like to introduce you to our contract planner working on this project, Jennifer Williams. She's going to be joining us shortly as our panelist. And she'll be able to answer questions.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Candida Neal, and I'm a contract planner for the city of South Pasadena. Before you tonight is project number 2341, which includes a request for a hillside development permit, design review, and variance to construct a single-family home on a vacant lot at 807 Rollin' Street. You will also be considering a tree removal permit to allow removal of five trees and the relocation of one tree on site. This, your approval would be subject to Public Works conditions. The applicant is Adrian Dahl of Dahl Architects. And attending the meeting are the property owners Wendy Mack and her husband Hong Ho. The project site is generally located west of Meridian Avenue and south of Monterey Road. Surrounded by single-family residents, the vacant lot is in close proximity to South Pasadena High School. On the aerial photo, you can see that the site outlined in yellow is directly adjacent to the cul-de-sac at the south end of Rollin' Street. Originally purchased by Caltrans for the extension of the 710 freeway, when the freeway project was abandoned, the site and the neighboring property to the north were subdivided. The subdivision created a 20-foot private driveway between the two existing lots and two additional residential parcels at the rear of the driveway. Surrounded by homes that were constructed in the 60s and 70s, the site slopes upward away from the street and is higher in the center than along the north and south property lines. The geotechnical report indicates that the mound in the center of the lot was created when developing properties in the area used the 807 Rollin' site to offload soil from their grading efforts. Please notice on the right of the photograph, the private driveway and residence to the north of the site, and on the left, the cul-de-sac bulb and the neighboring home to the rear of the lot. The modern courtyard home, shown in pink on the site plan, consists of three levels which follow the slope of the lot up the hillside. The design and location of the new home are sensitive to preserving the privacy of the neighboring residences. Notice how the new house steps away from the north property line, increasing the distance between the home on the other side of the private drive. On the south side, the location of the new home is east of the neighboring home to the south. The natural open space, shown in green on the site plan, is located between the new home and the existing residence to the west. Approximately 20% of the lot will be left ungraded and in a natural state. Although the landscaped area in front of the house, shown in the rendering, will be landscaped with plants native to California, it will be graded and, as a result, does not satisfy the criteria for natural state. And a variance has been requested to reduce the percentage requirement. With the exception of the variance, the project complies with the general plan zoning code and the city's adopted design guidelines for new residential construction and hillside development. The modern-style home is clad in horizontal hardy plank siding, vertical standing seam metal siding, vertical board form concrete texture siding. The variety of materials breaks up the wall into smaller modules and creates interest and variety. The extensive use of glass windows and doors surrounding the courtyard bring the outdoors into the home. The roof design, probably the most dramatic element of the home, incorporates a combination of shed and reverse gable or butterfly roofs with two-foot eve overhangs and a 212 pitch. There are multiple different levels and sections of roof that vary from front to back. In these elevations, you can see how privacy was a priority in this design. The north elevation, the upper drawing, steps back from the north property line. Windows are designed to provide light and air, but not to frame vistas. The south elevation, on the lower drawing, shows the walls of glass surrounding the courtyard, which is located east and down slope of the adjacent. The goal of the height restrictions in the hillside protection ordinance is to ensure that buildings' form follows the natural slope of the land. It does this by establishing a maximum height in relationship to the existing grade or the pre-grading grade. Maximum building height is based on roof pitch. For structures like the one proposed at 807 Rollin', which has a roof pitch of less than 312, the maximum height allowed is 24 feet. The highest point of an exposed single wall from the existing grade is 23 feet 9 inches on this house. As seen in the rendering, the massing and scale is approximate to the slope of the land. The rear of the home fronts onto a small backyard created by a series of retaining walls, with the rest of the lot 23% being left in a natural state. Although some walls will be lower, no retaining walls will exceed the maximum permitted height of six feet. The hillside ordinance requires a minimum of 25% of lot area, plus the percentage of the average slope must be remediated to its natural state for both slope and vegetation. With an average slope of 22.1%, 47.1% of the subject site must remain in a natural state. The applicant is requesting a variance to reduce this requirement to 23% and has provided a detailed written narrative justifying this request. He cites physical characteristics of the lot that restrict development, the shallow natural slope, the mound of artificial fill that extends from street level up the hillside. In addition, it should be noted that the narrowness of the site, less than 50 feet on the western property line, will also affect the development. As a result, staff supports the variance and believes the strict application of the natural state requirement will prevent the property owner from building a home with the same square footage and amenities as other homes in the neighborhood. It should also be noted that in addition to the 23% area dedicated to natural state, the project is using California-native plants in the front yard setback and along a portion of the north side yard. Although the area will be graded, the use of native landscaping will partially meet the intent of the hillside protection ordinance to preserve the natural hillside vegetation. In order to approve the hillside development permit, design review, and variance for the property at 807 Rollin' Street, the planning commission must adopt specific findings with supporting evidence for each entitlement. In reviewing the application, staff determined that the project met all the required findings. The findings with supporting evidence are found in the resolution, which is included as attachment one of the staff report. Findings are not required to adopt the tree removal permit. In accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, the project qualifies for categorical exemption under section 15332, a class 32 or infill development projects. The findings and evidence supporting the CEQA determination are also included in the resolution found in attachment one of the staff report. Staff recommends that you approve the hillside development permit, design review, variance, and tree removal permit. Planning commission options to the staff recommendation include approving the project with modified or additional conditions, continuing the public hearing, or denying the project. This concludes staff's presentation. And staff stands ready to answer any questions you may have. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Candida Neal.
Okay. Yes, you have something, Kamika?
Yes, ma'am, Chair, I would like to let the commissioner know that this evening, we share with the commission additional doc to revise planning condition number 12 regarding require a civil engineer for the traffic control. That condition is revised to be consistent with the Public Works condition. And that was also posted on our website this evening.
Thank you. Okay. Questions for staff before we open the public hearing? Commissioner Tom?
I don't have anything.
Vice Chair Lisa?
No questions at this time.
The only question I might have is, it's kind of an interesting site. Is there, what's the setback from the streets? I'm looking for that. Do you have that handy?
Madam Chair, just clarifying, you're asking for the full setback from the street, right?
Yes.
Jennifer, can you pull that?
Yeah, I'm getting that up right now.
It's 43 feet.
Okay, 43.
It's on the drawings.
Okay.
It's a little more than 43 feet.
There we go. Okay, so setback. Okay. That's really all I, that's, and I didn't, anyway. That's all I have for now. Okay. If nobody has any more questions before we open the public hearing, in which case I will open the public hearing. Staff, are there any additional comments for this item? Or any comments? And do we receive any public comments for this item?
Madam Chair, we did not receive any public comments for this item.
Great. Okay. Is the applicant available?
Yes, and we do have an applicant presentation that we would like to present to the commission before we bring the applicant on.
Okay, great. Okay.
Melinda, can you play the applicant's presentation?
Thank you, Commissioners and city staff, for joining us to consider our project. Also, thank you to Candida for her presentation and all the work she has done with us over the last few months to get this project to the hearing tonight. My name is Steve Dahl. I'm the architect for the project, along with my son Adrian, the project manager. The future homeowners are Wendy Mack and Hong Ho and their two daughters. They are already renting a home a few blocks away and are excited to build their dream home here in South Pasadena. The project is located on an empty lot that has previously been owned by Caltrans as part of their 710 freeway plans. The lot has never been built on, but is surrounded by all sides by other developed properties. So this is more of an infill or gap in the neighborhood, not a development of a wild hillside area. Our soil report describes how a large top layer of the soil is fill material that was added sometime in the 60s. You can even see a visible hump in the middle of the property that is higher in the middle and slopes back down on each side. Because of this, the total average grade of all the slopes on the lot is more than 20%.
Are you all getting like weird?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, can we try to fix that somehow?
20%, but the main slope from the back of the property down to the street is only about 18%. This is a shallower slope than.
Ma'am Chair, I can play their presentation.
Guidelines.
Maybe we can start over again?
Yeah, let me try to.
Or maybe, can you, can you back it up a little bit?
Thank you, Commissioners and city staff, for joining us to consider our project. Also, thank you to Candida for her presentation and all the work she has done with us over the last few months to get this project to the hearing tonight. My name is Steve Dahl. I'm the architect for the project, along with my son Adrian, the project manager. The future homeowners are Wendy Mack and Hong Ho and their two daughters. They are already renting a home a few blocks away and are excited to build their dream home here in South Pasadena. The project is located on an empty lot that has previously been owned by Caltrans as part of their 710 freeway plans. The lot has never been built on, but is surrounded by all sides by other developed properties. So this is more of an infill or gap in the neighborhood, not a development of a wild hillside area. Our soil report describes how a large top layer of the soil is fill material that was added sometime in the 60s. You can even see a visible hump in the middle of the property that is higher in the middle and slopes back down on each side. Because of this, the total average grade of all the slopes on the lot is more than 20%, but the main slope from the back of the property down to the street is only about 18%. This is a shallower slope than typical hillside properties, so our design process has had many challenges and compromises between the hillside design guidelines and the hillside development standards. The main goal of this design is to have the home blend in with the existing hillside slope instead of doing major grading. There are multiple different levels and roof heights as the home flows up the hill from the street. The guest suite is set 10 feet back from the garage to avoid a big vertical front two-story wall. Then the main first floor level is sunk down below the guest suite, and there is a flat roof area between the two before the start of the second floor. On the two-story portions of the back of the home, the flat roof portion continues all the way around as trim that helps divide the vertical massing. This is further defined by a continuous band of high windows on the first floor and a change in materials from textured concrete to wood or metal siding. When viewed from the street, you will see multiple different modules or portions of the home with the different textures, concrete, wood siding, standing seam metal panels, and large glass windows. Each of these is also defined by different heights and setbacks or offsets from each other to prevent an overwhelming view when seen from the street below. An important part of the function of the home was to have a strong connection to the outside environment, light, air, views, et cetera, while still having privacy, both for us and the neighbors. The home is designed around a central courtyard with glass walls on three sides that allows the entire first-floor living area to look out onto this private, shared indoor-outdoor space. The landscaping is intended to create a natural hillside look for the front and the back of the home instead of a garden or lawn. The driveway is on the south side of the property off of the side of the cul-de-sac, so there will be a continuous strip of landscaping between the sidewalk and the driveway to screen the paving from view and make it look like the home is coming straight up out of the hillside. The back landscaping area will be mostly left unchanged, except for 10 new trees that will create a new small forested area and provide erosion control. There's a small terrace area to transition from the home level back up to the existing grade of the hillside. These retaining walls and terraces won't be visible from the street, and all retaining walls on all the sides and the back will be less than six feet in height. For the wall between the property and the home to the south, the new grade will be lower on the project side. This means that the height of the wall on the neighbor's side will be lower and won't loom over their property. While we are applying for a variance for this project due to the natural state development standard, which requires 47% of the lot area to be returned to its natural state in terms of slope and vegetation. As mentioned earlier, there isn't really anything natural about this site as existing. Neither the slope nor the plants have been there for more than 50 years, and the site is surrounded on all sides by other homes. One question would be, in which state is really the natural one? We could really return the original site to its original state, but that would require major grading of the entire lot area and removal of all the trees and plants. The other option would be to try and return the 47% to the current state, which includes non-natural cross slopes and assortment of weeds and invasive species. Further, based on the layout of the home, which we have designed to flow with the slope, the footprint of the home is stretched out and takes up a larger percentage of the lot area. We could create a more landscaped area, but it would require the home to be more compact and more vertical. The variance is necessary, then, because of the specific characteristics of this property due to the non-natural current conditions and the shallow overall slope that is not typical of other hillside projects. We will still try and maximize landscape areas and try to make them as natural as possible. We won't return these areas back to their current state, but we will use plants and trees that will make it look like a natural hillside. We will also try and meet the intent of this requirement by creating a large, continuous sloping landscape area in the front and a large upgrading and mostly untouched natural area in the back. Thank you for your time and consideration of this project. We are standing by to answer any questions or provide more information.
Thank you for that presentation. Okay. Does the, I guess we don't need a rebuttal. But do we want to bring the applicant on so that we can ask any questions that we might have for the applicant?
Yes, ma'am, Chair. The property owner Wendy Mack is online with us right now, available to answer any question from the commission. And her architects, Steve Dahl and Adrian Dahl, are also on the line.
Okay, terrific. I think Vice Chair Lisa, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I don't have any questions at this time, no.
Commissioner Tom?
No questions.
I think the applicant still gets a five minutes, Kamika, is that correct?
Yes.
So, does the applicant or the applicant's architect want to add anything to that presentation? Wendy?
Yeah, hi, I'm Wendy, the owner of the property. Thank you for, thank you, Commissioner, and city staff to consider our projects. It's been quite a journey last year, and thanks to Steve and Adrian, they put a lot of time and effort to carefully consider the, all, carefully consider the design of the house, especially our neighbor. And actually, this holiday, we reach out to our neighbor. The people around us get to talk to them and explain the project to them and get to hear what they're concerned on and everything. They seems to be very pleased and very supportive with our project. And actually, that day is a relief to us, me and my husband, because this is not a dream home only to just build our own, build our own house, but also a wonderful neighborhood that our girls will grow up in. And I think we will try our very best to fulfill the requirement of the city. And we hope that we could get your permission to, you know, make this project to move one step forward. And I want to thank you for your time. And I'll leave it to Steve to answer all your questions or you need more information. Thank you again.
Thank you. Okay, Steve, does Steve Dahl have anything he wants to add to that? Or Adrian?
We're, we're both here, Adrian and I, watching you guys. Nice scarf on Kanika. We're just here to answer any questions you might have. As Wendy said, and her husband Hong and the two girls, it's really been a team effort. And John, as you can realize, quite a thrill to have an empty lot to work with. Usually, everything's built out and most of our work is remodels and additions. Kind of interesting timing with COVID, with everyone going crazy, but this was planned before that, of course. And it's kind of neat, even looking back now, how the courtyard was such an important thing early on in this project. How nice that is now, that's where everybody wants to be is outside in the courtyard. Yeah, please, it's a pretty straightforward, but if there are any questions, you know, we're so familiar with it. But it's crazy because we submitted this back in July. So we haven't drawn on this house since then, but we'd love to help you out. And Adrian's got everything on the computer. The 3D, I think, is especially helpful. And John, you could probably kick me for all the years we tried doing everything in 2D. We design differently now in 3D. In fact, now usually we'll do a 3D model first and then the exterior elevations are after that because we really have to visualize everything 3D. So the first thing we get is the survey from our civil engineer and then Adrian can actually incorporate the model of the home with the topography. And that really, really helps. So let us know, and I don't know if the city allows us to share our screen, but we can show you any angle you want if it's, if it's helpful to see something.
Steve, does your model, Steve, does your model have the adjacent properties on it in 3D?
No. We just got the topo of our property. We tried to put it in as best we could. We did add the adjacent driveway and the adjacent grade on the neighbor's side to the south. So those are both shown in the 3D model, but the actual adjacent homes are not shown.
Okay.
You know, I did have a question, Steve, this is Richard. I think there was, in the, in the staff report, there was reference to the driveway being common and to the lots in the back. Was, is that a common driveway that theoretically this property could have used? But given everything else, the choice was made to you to have a separate driveway? Or was that, is that common driveways really for the other properties and not for this one?
That, that's a terrific question. And when we first went out there and met with our clients, the homeowners that bought this property from Caltrans, that was our first idea, was to share that driveway, that it's a flag lot and there's two homes up the hill from us to the west and they share that. In fact, the home right to the north, which is downhill, it's kind of odd, that shares the driveway as well. So there's three homes on it. And that was the idea, why do a new driveway if we can just share the driveway that's already there? But you know, when you get into the details and the neighbors and parking and coming and going, it, we had, it was good in theory, but not in practicality. But the next option, of course, is to boon deuce, do the driveway from the street. But, but I know John has a very creative house and knows how these crazy things can happen. We realized we could come in from the south and from the bulb of the cul-de-sac. And then that allowed us two important things. One is to leave the landscaping in the front all the way across. The other, which is even more important likely, and John will laugh at this too, I know with his driveway, that's a son of a gun. It's higher uphill at the end of the cul-de-sac. So then it allows us to enter the site at a higher height and then we don't have as much slope coming onto the property. So it really did some wonderful things for us. We would have loved to have shared that driveway to the north, but it just didn't work out. But I'm happy with the driveway to the south.
Yeah, I could see that, I could see why it made more sense to do it as you've done it. I, that's right, thank you.
Yeah, good question.
Okay, yes, it's great to have you back, Steve.
You guys are looking like you haven't aged at all.
Okay, does anyone have any questions right now before we, before we start discussing?
Madam Chair, I have a quick question for Steve. And that is, if the homeowners have aged parents, will the driveway being located on the south and having an up slope permit, for example, access for senior parents by way of a wheelchair or a walker?
Madam Mayor, that, that's a wonderful question. And are they seeing the screen that you're, okay, they're seeing the screen. So we'll enter on the south at the end of the cul-de-sac and you'll come across the front of the house and then you can proceed. And, and thanks for pointing this out, this is a key feature that was so critical to the design of the whole home with the elderly parents. And if you don't have them now, you will have them in the future if you still have parents. The driveway comes all the way up on the north and connects right up so that it's at the level of the front door. So you open up the door and you go right in the front door at that level. It's quite a slope up there, but of course, Adrian, very carefully, and thank God we had the topo on AutoCAD, there, the slopes allowed, there's a maximum and it's really quite a gentle slope. Wendy, who you heard from earlier, promises us that not only can she drive up that, but she can back down it.
Well planned, Steve, us seniors appreciate it.
Yeah, we're all getting older and I did break my leg once hiking in Norway. And so you never know when you're going to need to get in the front door of your own home and can't go up the stairs.
Okay, any last questions before we close the public hearing? Okay, well, Steve and Adrian, thank you so much. And maybe you can stand by because there may be some questions that come up. But at this point, we're going to close the public hearing and have a discussion. So thank you. Okay, who wants to go first? Commissioner Tom?
No, I, I think it's a very well-done project. I think it's taken account of both the sort of unique, very unique circumstances of the property, it being, you know, a former fill, basically a site for fill or for graded material from, from other projects. I think that they've done a nice job of trying to take account of what the neighbors need and want and in terms of privacy. I think, given the circumstances of the property, I think that the variance is called for here. And so I'd be ready to approve it.
Vice Chair Lisa.
I tend to agree with Commissioner Tom. So there's a, I have a pet peeve, so Steve knows what it is. I like to see the adjacent homes diagrammatically in elevations and section drawings. So I understand the relationships of the existing buildings to the new building. That ties into our requirements for making design review decisions, particularly neighborhood compatibility. I'm an architect, I can usually see these things, but I find that I do have to draw them because I frequently will over underestimate the height of the adjacent property when it's on a hillside. So please, please, in the future, require applicants to have that information in the package. But I do understand the submission. Yeah, when you see the drawings, you see a house with nothing next to it, that's not realistic. You know, our job is to look at the neighborhoods and how new development affects the existing conditions. And it's hard to do that when that's not there. So that said, I understand the project pretty well. The applicant did a really nice job working with the hillside, breaking the massing up. I think it will fit, fit within the neighborhood. So I'm, I'm willing to go ahead and approve the project too. And the variances do make sense for this lot. And I, so since we're, since we've, I'll make another point since we've been dealing with kind of, you know, talking about regional housing needs assessment and the unique factors within South Pasadena. And I think this project is an example of the unique factors. You know, so many of the residential properties in South Pasadena are located, small lots, interesting lots, hillside lots that are challenging to develop. The city has a lot of development in place, so it's rare when you can find a parcel like this and have the opportunity to build a new house. So I do think this is illustrative of the conditions of South Pasadena.
Right, okay, and, and thank you. And yes, I also think that this is, you know, and just, I'm not an architect, but looking at that lot, I think, I don't know how you sort of start planning where you want to put things, but just, just from the drawings, I like the placement, I like the breaking up of the massing, I like the roof line. I, the outdoor spaces, I think it, I think it's a really nice project, actually. And a lot of creative elements to it. So, and I like the fact that we got no public comments, you talked to the neighbors. I think that's very important. So I'm not, I think the variance is warranted here for the reasons that have been stated or that are in the packet. Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of this project and I appreciate the time and thought put into this. So on that, is anyone willing to make a, oh, yes, Kanika?
I just want to clarify on the public comment, there was one comment that we've received, but we include that in the staff report. And one thing I wanted to also mention to the Commission, and there is one about this project, is that once the Plan Commission approves this project, we'll be working with the applicant to convert the interior space to an 80. So that's to bring back John's discussion, Commissioner, Vice Chair Lisa's discussion about how this will work as more housing and not just the main housing. That's all I have to say.
Yeah, so there was this one comment, right?
Yes.
But more like questions, more like questions.
Right, they just mainly have questions and concerns about construction, which we have already addressed in the conditions of approval.
Okay. Is anyone willing to make a motion here?
I'll do that. I move approval of project number 2341 HDP DRX VAR TRP Hillside Development Permit, Design Review Variance and Tree Permit to allow the construction of a 3,411 square foot multi-level home with an attached 538 square foot garage on an undeveloped site in 807 Rollin Street as submitted.
There are seconds, Kanika?
Kanika. Oh, with the, with the, with the revision, that modification that staff had submitted to make the conditions relative to match up with what was in, I believe it was Public Works.
It was condition P12, is that the one, P12C?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
I will second.
Okay, so we have a motion made by Commissioner Tom and a second by Vice Chair Lisa. We'll take a roll call vote on this. Are there any final discussion? Okay, I will take a roll call vote, Commissioner Tom.
Hi.
Vice Chair Lisa?
Hi.
And myself, aye. So the motion passes unanimously by a vote of three to zero. This project is approved, subject to the conditions of approval. This decision is final unless an appeal is filed within 15 days from today. No construction or activity may commence during this period. Appeal forms may be obtained from the City Clerk's office. Okay, thank you. Thank you, staff, and thank you applicant and, and Steve and Adrian. Can we bring back, looks like we're bringing back Commissioner Padilla and Commissioner Dahl. Okay, welcome back.
Madam Chair, I just want to note for the record that Commissioner Dahl joined us at 8:15 tonight.
On track, so yes, Commissioner Dahl, thank you for joining us. I know you were, we were noted that you were refused from this first item, so. Okay, let's move on to the second item on the agenda, the tenant protection ordinance. Is there a presentation, staff, on this?
I'll give you a short presentation. This is Joanna Inkamer, Director of Planning and Community Development. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. So the item before you is, is recommended that the Planning Commission review and make a recommendation to City Council to adopt an urgency ordinance for tenant protections, requiring building permits and scope of work prior to no-fault, just-cause termination of tenancy for a substantial remodel and to replace the current four-month moratorium on no-fault, just-cause terminations with this ordinance. So just to remind the Commission, this was before you on December 15th. And the content of the draft before you was discussed at that meeting and the consensus of the Commission was twofold, that it made sense to move forward as quickly as possible with an urgency ordinance for tenant protections related to the building permit requirement. And that also more, that likely more time and study would be needed to address the tenant relocation assistance portion, if that is to be part of a future amendment. The very next night, the City Council discussed this and agreed. They asked staff to come back as quickly as possible with a permanent ordinance to address the permit requirement and bifurcated the issue, requesting staff do more study and outreach before coming back with the rental, the relocation assistance piece. So what is before you tonight and in your packet is a draft of the ordinance that we, that is on the agenda for City Council to consider on the 20th, so next week. And what we're asking the Commission tonight to do is to review, to review the draft, give us any comments and make a recommendation to staff to give to City Council next week. And just to let you know as well, the meeting next week is January 20th for City Council. One of the other discussion items with the Commission last month was the importance of doing continued education and outreach, not just regarding with the rights and responsibilities, but also, you know, what is required for a permit, you know, the benefits of having a permit, et cetera. And we're doing a first outreach meeting on January 25th. And then we'll follow up with additional educational materials that we can have available at the counter. So with that, I just want to turn it over to you. Thank you, and to let you know, we've had two public comments that we submitted and an additional doc this early this afternoon.
Or, does anyone have questions for staff at this point? Commissioner Padilla? Any questions for staff on this right at this point?
I do, I think I do have a couple. So with this current draft, and I'm sorry if I, if I missed it, Joanna and staff, but does this include a stipulation that the permits need to be recorded and provided to the tenant as proof that permits were pulled? I mean, that seems like that, that's something I know we spoke about as a Commissioner, we talked about. And I, and I definitely saw it appearing in the comments that we received, the public comments. But I'm sorry if I missed it, I wasn't sure I saw it in this draft.
Yeah, it's in section, let's see. J2D double R. D double I. It's and it basically says. No, no, just cause eviction for substantial remodel or demolition shall be effective unless building permits were first secured from the city of South Pasadena. And the tenant was provided with copies of the building permits and a written detailed account of the scope of work. Why the work cannot be reasonably accomplished in a safe manner with the tenant in place. And why the work cannot be completed within thirty days, which is essentially from the definition of state law of substantial remodel.
Okay, thank you, Joanna. I appreciate your findings. The other thing I wanted to ask is the question, so the bifurcation that council recommended, so. Do we not, are we not supposed to comment, or is it not appropriate to comment on the? The relocation assistance, you know, the one month. Rent amount versus something else. Is that something that will come up later or be handled by council? I guess I'm not sure what's appropriate, if that's appropriate to comment on.
We certainly would welcome any comments that you have. We've we've already recorded the comments that the commission has had because this has been discussed somewhat. And we have those notes. We also are following up with tenants and landlords to and just market research to be able to bring back to you. Before we go to city council, our findings and our recommendations regarding relocation assistance. So. The item before you is is the is regarding the draft ordinance for the building permits. We can certainly take more comments, but we have recorded the ones that you've given us the past and we will be back. Before this commission.
Okay, thanks, Joanna. I mean, I think that's a really obviously important topic. Because I can't even imagine how hard it would be to find a place when you've been given notice that you have to find a new place to live. It's just especially right now. Okay, thanks, Joanna. And then this is a minor one under, let's see. Page two ten, or let me track back the section. It's, if you have it as on page two ten, it's item seven. There was a comment about. Housing that has been issued a certificate of occupancy within the previous fifteen years. This is under. Exclusions, you know, that this would not apply. I guess I'm sorry, I wasn't clear. This is housing, the term, is that referring to? Public or institutional housing or multifamily housing? I just, I thought that was interesting. I wasn't sure why. A certificate of occupancy within the previous fifteen years, meaning a newish newer project would be excluded? Can you speak to that?
I'd actually, I'm going to ask Terry, our city attorney, to address that.
Sure, this is the actual language of AB fourteen eighty two. This is the state law, word for word. The way that and the exceeding this or applying the. The rent control and the just cause eviction procedures of this state law. Exceeding that was not part of the purview. We were only looking at enhancing. The tenant protections in the event that someone tried to use the substantial remodel provision. Because I guess there have been some anecdotal information, which is believable within the city of. Landlords, property owners saying, hey, we're going to substantially remodel. The unit that you are in. And so here is your notice to vacate. And in order to make them prove up. The what we're suggesting, which is what we've been requested to do by the council and. And the many, many tenants, I guess this has very vast support from tenants in the city. Is to make the property owner prove up by first pulling the building permits. Providing the tenant with a copy of those building permits and as part of the notice. To terminate, to leave the building. Also explain, hey, this is my scope of work. This is why I needed a building permit. I can't safely do this work with you in the unit and it is going to take more than thirty days to complete this work. And so that's. That is the actual additional language that's being provided. The rest of this is just word for word state law.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the clarification. I have no other questions, Chair Brown.
Commissioner Dahl, do you have questions?
I have any questions. Thank you.
Vice Chair Lisa, any questions?
Something occurred to me when I was rethinking this and I just. This is half discussion and half question. So. For example, in the city of Los Angeles, they have something called ready to issue. Which means that the. Requirements for the permit have been satisfied. With the exception of a contractor being selected. So your drawings of, so if I'm an architect, I submit drawings, my drawings have been approved. They meet the requirements of the city and the permit is deemed ready to issue. And then, you know, a contractor needs to come in, prove he's got his contractor license, he's got his insurance. And then the permit is actually issued. So there's kind of different steps involved with the permitting process. And while that that formality doesn't exist in South Pasadena, the process is about the same. And I have a, you know, I have a, I'm wondering. You know, there's a difference between having the building permit ready to go and having the building permit be pulled. And I'm wondering if that had been discussed in the process of coming up with the draft language. And what that, if you could. Issue a notice on something ready to issue. Then there's, you know, there can be larger time windows for the tenant to vacate. And then the contractor can actually, you know, be pulling, getting the or the owner of the property and getting the contractor ready at the same time. So anyway, that was a, that's a question that I have now is has that, is that, has the permit process actually? Been considered in the different phases and steps involved with it?
So. The we, in in drafting this language, we have not considered that. There was in the many discussions that we had with stakeholders, there was one. Property owner who expressed a preference for not having to pay for the permit. Prior to proving that, you know, essentially it was ready to issue. So like, we don't, we don't have a process. Ready to issue and and it hasn't been included in the draft of this. But it has been a topic of one of our outreach meetings.
Okay, so. I'll wait till I.
Are you done? I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm 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 done. I wanted to ask that one question.
Okay, all right. And Commissioner Tom?
No questions. I would just note, because Joanna, you ran me around looking for the section. It's actually, I think it's B two, D two. It's sort of someone looking at, looking for it is the section. That's where the language you were referencing is. And again, if Terry's correct, it's just like that add on to the state or state law, but but that's where it is if someone's looking for it. It's B two, D two. So that was, that was the only comment.
And I had a couple of questions. So this is a new, this would be a new provision or a new. A new part of our section of our municipal code, right? Nothing exists. This is just adding this whole section seventeen point nine five.
Correct. So it is, it is a new ordinance if council adopts it, yes, but it's.
Okay, and it, I understand it restates the California state law, yes, except for. It does talk about, except for the issuing of the permits on the substantial improvements, right?
Yes.
So one of my questions is, do we really feel the need to restate the whole state law? And can't this just sort of be interpretation or something? And I'm not a, although I'm a lawyer, I'm not a legislative expert. But I think one of the problems I have is what if the state law changes? Now we've got a municipal code that's a little different. So I don't know that we need to restate the California state law. Like, don't we just need to kind of? Deal with the provision we're talking about, which is the substantial improvements and requiring. That 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 means that somebody has to get the building permits. And I think Vice Chair Lisa creates a good point is. Exactly what is that? So I just worry that we're adding more than we really need to. So that's more of a sort of. Functional approach. My second question is, there were several comments that they were from December saying that. There was that the state was going to reconsider this. And by February one. So my question is, and I don't know if Terry knows the answer to this. It's like whether. What's happening on the state of the state law on this topic?
Sure, these just cause eviction provisions. And additionally, the freeze on rent. Will still be effective in February. That that is not sunsetting at all. In terms of restating this one section, this is only a part of AB fourteen eighty four. We didn't cut and paste the whole law. Of eighteen four, of fourteen eighty four, just the section on just cause eviction. And the reason I did that in an abundance of caution is because this portion of state law. Preempts anything else in the state unless you can make findings. That you are changing something to be more protective of a tenant. And in order to be able to show that, I thought it was best to restate the entire just cause eviction. Provision, not leave anything out. Because I don't want to be accused of missing something or. Having people say, well, which do we follow? What the city has here or what state law is? So I put in the entire. State law regarding just cause and modified the one area which was the. To have additional procedures for protections for a substantial remodel. And if state law changes in the future, we'll just amend the ordinance to be consistent with it.
And I'd like to add, we actually did receive some public comments early on. With the request to essentially clarify, you know, local ordinance. So, you know, in the sense that requiring someone to go to state law and to local law to kind of piece it together seemed cumbersome. And so the intent was to have it in one place.
Okay, that's helpful.
And and one other question, you you did ask about the, what is. Expiring on February, February one, it's not AB fourteen eighty two, but it's. AB thirty eighty eight, which is. Basically a moratorium on all just on no cause. Just cause no fault evictions unless by state or government order. So regardless of whether you have a permit or not. And that is related to more of the pandemic conditions than, you know, what this ordinance is really an indefinite. One. And and we don't, you know, that's currently set to expire on February one.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. I do not have any more questions. Vice Chair Lisa.
I I was looking at the public comments that came through on this item. And one of them talked about timing everything. And I thought they were, they were reasonably good comments, but the. Is there? And it may be in the in the write-up, but is there, is there, are there timing requirements included? When the information needs to be provided? And is it specific? And then how long, is there a time once the notice is given to? When vacation, when the property or the apartment must be vacated? That may be a state requirement. I just.
Yeah. The, I think there's a sixty day requirement and that's in the state law.
Okay.
Yeah, but the the requirement of the permit is that just that the, in that before you can serve the notice of termination. I think that you must first, you know, provide copies of the building permit. I think it's essentially likely, you know, simultaneous to the.
Okay.
One other comment, Joanna, can you remind me, was this modeled on some other cities' ordinances on this topic?
Yeah, Long Beach and Los Angeles, I believe, are both have similar building permit requirements. I think Inglewood may as well.
That I would remember Long Beach. Okay.
You're on mute, Chair Brown.
If there's no more questions, is anybody, then I'm going to open the public hearing unless anybody has a final question before then. Okay, so none. I will open the public hearing. Staff, are there any public comments on this item?
The only, there were two public comments submitted in writing and those were provided to the commission earlier today. There were no voice public comments submitted.
And those were posted on the website, yes?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so I will now close the public public hearing and we'll have a discussion. We'll start with Commissioner Dahl. Any, any thing you want to discuss or your feeling on this?
I'm in support of this. I think it feels like it's been on our agenda for several months in a row now and I feel like we. Were all pretty comfortable with it and I'm in support of it. I don't have any changes or other comments.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Padilla.
I thought the public comments we got were really helpful to understand how the different facets of this issue, which are. Complex and really vital, especially to building great community in South Pasadena and supporting our tenants. And being supportive of what owners need to do. So yeah, I think the time is now. So. It was helpful. So appreciate the comments. It came from a lot of different perspectives. I thought it was helpful to review. That was it.
Commissioner Tom?
Nothing to add beyond what Commissioners Dahl and Padilla have said.
And Vice Chair Lisa. Oh, you're on mute.
Yeah, the only real comment I would have is to consider the actual machinations of how a permit is pulled. And the timing of things, I. There, you you may want to have an interim step that would be enough to. Describe the work that's being done, why it's being done, and the fact that it will be done up to code. And that the permit is ready to be pulled as opposed to waiting to pull it. Just different timing. Items that I come across in my work often. But otherwise, I agree. It's it's a vital piece. I think it's a perfectly fair and reasonable requirement. To. To have to document and justify. One suggestion that I would have is. Assuming this goes in the place that there be a model. Developed. That kind of could be given to a property owner so that they know how to kind of structure. The. The notice properly. For a sample. By otherwise. But otherwise, I'm fully in support.
Great, thank you. I just, I wanted to, I'm sorry, I wanted to ask one more question, maybe Joanna. I know in the time I've been on the planning commission, I don't think there's been a substantial remodel of a, of a rental building that's come before the planning commission, but maybe we wouldn't see those because
Yeah, we wouldn't see them.
So my question is, you know, how, I don't know if there's any kind of feel for how often does this occur? I'm just kind of curious.
Yeah. And, you know, that's a question that's come up in our, when, when talking with the property owners, they want to know how big of a problem this is that a substantial remodel happens without a permit. Or an eviction occurs based on substantial remodel, but then the remodel doesn't happen. You know, the problem is that we don't, we don't track those kinds of activities. So, you know, to say that we don't that we have none is, is not necessarily accurate. We just don't track it. So we don't know. You know, what, what would happen is, you know, we would get a permit request, a permit application for you know, possibly an interior remodel that wouldn't have any changes to the exterior. So it wouldn't even go to a commission. It would just go through building and safety and basically a zone clearance from planning to confirm that there was no other planning approval required. And so, you know, what we do know is that, you know, of our, of our code enforcement cases, I would say the majority of them are for unpermitted construction. So we know that unpermitted construction happens. You know, we don't know what's happening prior to that. If there is eviction, you know, if this is, I mean, we generally know, we, we don't ask this question, but we would generally have an understanding if it's someone remodeling their own home, right? But we don't have a mechanism to track that information right now. So we just don't know. The answer is, we don't know how often this happens. But we do know unpermitted construction happens quite a bit.
So I'm going to follow up a little bit with Vice Chair Lisa's point. So if somebody comes in, a property owner comes in and files for the building permit. Right?
Applies for it.
Applies for it. And then how long is that process before they obtain the building permit? And I know that varies. I know that's the answer you're going to give me.
I would say depending on the scope, it could be anywhere from two to three weeks to, you know, six months or more. I mean, if there is, if they're changing a window and it's at the front of a house and needs also a planning approval, the, the building staff would refer it to planning. So it'd have to go through planning approval before it could even be accepted as an applicant, a permit application, right? So that process can be quite lengthy. You know, if it's, you know, if it's just an interior remodel and it doesn't have any sort of planning purview and it's you know, and it's involving, I don't know, relatively straightforward changes, then it could be, you know, within a matter of a few weeks. But generally, a substantial remodel, I would say, you know, takes minimum a month for a permit to be issued.
Yeah. And I, I now don't remember exactly what the, this proposed ordinance says, but it seems to me, and we've talked about sort of the timing and how much time you give your your renters. But if, if it's going to be take time to get that permit approved, it's almost like you should have to tell your renters this is coming when you apply for the permit. And because that will add, that will give a renter more time to make alternative arrangements, right? And I don't want to really rewrite this, but that would be my thought. It's almost the same. I'm following up on Vice Chair Lisa's thought, like maybe we really ought to think through, and that would be my advice, but mechanic, the, the mechanics of this whole thing to sort of figure out what really makes the most sense. I'm for this. I just think you might, we might want to just think through a little bit, when do you notify renters? And when are, then when are they allowed to give the eviction notice itself? Do you know what I'm saying?
So right now, the, when they're allowed to give the eviction notice is included in this ordinance. It's basically, they can only do it, they can, they have to give 60 days, that's state law. And they have to show, you know, the permit and the scope of work and et cetera, and then they can issue it. I don't know, Terry might want to weigh in on whether or not we can increase, essentially increase that time.
Well, in other words, in other words, like maybe there's a preliminary notice required that I pulled these permits. Put you on, you know what I'm saying? Put you on notice that this might happen and you might get an eviction notice. I, I don't know if that's just muddying the waters, but I do think there's a process here that needs to be taken into account somehow.
Yeah. And I think, and whatever, whatever it is that is in the final ordinance, certainly the education piece is very important because the city doesn't have any kind of mechanism. And we wouldn't accept an application and then notify a tenant that their owner is doing something. This is really incumbent on the property owner to communicate with the tenant and the tenant to know their rights. I mean, that's essentially what the, the relationship here that we are.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Lisa, I, I would suggest that it would be in the property owner's best interest to provide the type of advanced notification to the tenant that you described, just to alert the tenant that, hey, this is what I'm doing. And certainly advanced notice is something, greater communication is something that the city would strongly support. But I, I will also mention, we have heard anecdotally of, I can think of at least two separate instances where apparently property owners did attempt to evict tenants not in compliance with state law. So I do believe that there is a strong city interest in amend, in amending state law to provide for these additional protections for tenants. And also, you know, the city has difficulty in obtaining actual notice of modifications that are occurring to residences without without the, the proper building permits. And certainly this would help to, I think, provide additional vigilance. And this benefits the city from several different respects in that not only does it provide additional protection for the tenants, but also there's been a problem previously where the city has not always been aware of improvements to residential properties that have occurred, which the city thereby does not obtain the benefit of the increased property value assessments that go along with those improvements. And at this point, I am very happy to tell you that, would you believe, among the 88 cities in LA County, we are number three in terms of receipt of property tax revenues. And by far, property tax revenues is the single largest source of revenues for the city. So it is incredibly important for the city to be prized of all development that does occur, that is subject to a building permit. And this is just a tool that I think would be to the mutual interest of our our residents who are tenants as well as the city.
You, Mayor Mamud. Yeah. And I agree that this is good. I just, I'm just wondering, I'm just going to throw it out there, whether we want to kind of think through sort of additional notification. I don't know that you want to rewrite this, but you know, maybe it's just more of an in practice kind of suggestion to property owners that when you apply for this, it's really in your best interest to sort of let your tenants know.
And that, and that gets back to the, you know, my concept of having a sample of what, you know, a document should look like the tenant receives. So the tenant has an understanding of what's expected. And we're really, both parties have an expectation of what would be expected. I don't know. I always find that very helpful. Because sometimes you get very disorganized things. And they're hard to understand. So.
Yeah, part of our next steps, if council adopts this is to develop, you know, basically educational material.
Yeah.
To get out to people. I, I do have one concern about the kind of free notice. And that is the potential confusion. If someone is reading the law or isn't reading our materials, that they now think that they can evict, they can, they can initiate the 60 day notice at application, which would be really a significant problem in many cases. So I'm a little nervous about the muddying of the message there.
I, I, I understand that. Okay. Is there any other discussion on this item? Does anybody want to make a motion? And I think we are just here providing a recommendation. So I'm going to ask Terry whether we need a, we actually need a motion and do we need to take action or do just want a recommendation? Exactly what action would you like from this commission?
The council would like a recommendation whether or not to adopt this form of urgency ordinance with or without any amendments that you might think it needs. And it would be best to do that in, in a motion with a full voice vote.
I'm sorry, the motion would be to make a, we recommend to council that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood your question. That's exactly right. The motion would be to make, to recommend to the city council to adopt the urgency ordinance for tenant protection as recommended by staff or as presented in your staff report.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Would anyone like to make a motion, one way or the other?
I'll do it. I, I, I move that, that the commission make a recommendation to the city council to adopt the urgency ordinance for tenant protections that has been submitted by staff as submitted as part of the agenda package.
A second for that motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Tom with a second by Vice Chair Lisa. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none? I'll take a roll call. Commissioner Dahl.
Hi.
Commissioner Tom.
Hi.
Commissioner Padilla.
Hi.
Vice Chair Lisa.
Hi.
And myself, aye. That motion passes unanimously by a vote of five to zero recommending adoption of the urgency ordinance to the city council.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is the inclusion, the inclusionary housing ordinance update. Do we have a staff report on this item?
Hi, good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Liz Barrell, I'm the interim long range planning and economic development manager and happy to be with you again this evening. We included a staff report, a brief staff report in your packets to let you know how we've been progressing on preparing the inclusionary ordinance. We have had, well, two meetings as of the time of that report, but we had a third meeting of the subcommittee today. And got some very good guidance and we're very appreciative of the time of Commissioners Tom and Dahl on this effort. So I think we're ready to be coming to you on the 26th with the, with the recommendation for the ordinance. We'll also be able to explain to you on the 26th, some progress or a pathway towards having an in lieu fee that would be an alternative in some cases specific, that would be very specific in the ordinance. And how that in lieu fee could potentially be part of the regional San Gabriel Valley Housing Trust. And we'll talk more about that on the 26th, but it's a very exciting possibility for the city to be involved in this this new organization that is going to it really seems to us after having met with them that this will really bring some affordable housing into the San Gabriel Valley. And yeah, so I'm just going to keep that really brief. Joanna was also going to add a bit about the specific sites that we're looking at to integrate the density bonus with the inclusionary housing ordinance. So Joanna, do you want to?
Yeah, sure. Thank you. So one of our, our recommendations is to just get concurrence from the planning commission to let you know that we're at a point, you know, so far, we, we have been working only on a sort of a working draft of the suitable sites analysis for the housing element. And we want to basically put that into a draft form. And, and at least stop some of the moving pieces and then supply that to HCD, the state housing and community development department for their preview of our policies and programs for the housing element. And so what the state has done is they've offered to do a preview of jurisdictions, sort of preliminary work to give some initial feedback. So they could do so on not only what we might do for an inclusionary housing policy, what we might do for select sites, opportunity sites. I know we've been to you before with five and six sites that we previously proposed for height. Now we're working on a potential provision within a inclusionary housing policy that would essentially handhold a developer through use of the state density bonus. But with some kind of caveats, design standards that we discussed at our last commission meeting when we presented the VON site, for example. So we'd like to present a policy to HCD to see if it is suitable, if they will accept such policies to help us count affordable housing units towards our arena obligation. So we want to sort of show them those sites that we've been looking at and show them a policy. Certainly, we wouldn't do that before we come back to you with the inclusionary housing policy, but generally, we want to get your concurrence that that is a step that that you, you feel is important. You know, the other thing that we can ask HCD about is a big topic of conversation has been the ADU projections. So we can show them what we have and we're intending to do with ADUs as well to get their initial feedback.
So that's our update. If the commission has any questions.
Good question. Sorry, I'm still at work. Okay, thank you for that report. And does anyone have any questions? How about Vice Chair Lisa? Any questions?
Yeah, the the suitable sites analysis, could we? Would it be possible to get that with enough advanced time so we could visit them and spend some time with them? Like, you know, the typical getting, getting the information for the packet, you know, a few days before, it doesn't always give, give us time to visits or review things in a, in a meaningful way. So if we could, you know, if there's 20 sites, I'd like to be able to visit them and think about them. So would there be a way to get an advanced list so we could have a little more time?
Yeah, and we'd actually like your input, if there are any others. I can tell you right now, the sites that we're looking at are the five sites we originally discussed. If you'd like, I can list those now. And then we added a site on Mission that is very close to the station on the north side of Mission, close to the train station. We've also added potentially the site that the Shake Shakers is on because of some interest from that property owner to look at affordable housing. So those are seven, seven sites. And then we've also heard from this commission, the potential interest of including more of the ostrich farm than just the Tyco site and the vacant site previously that they're included in those seven. And a potential expansion beyond the Ralph site in Huntington centers, basically. Those would be the ones you know, otherwise, anything else on Fair Oaks. I don't think we're looking at more sites on Mission particularly, but sites on Fair Oaks and in the downtown on Fair Oaks. if you have any recommendations.
Are you looking at a certain number of units or certain parcel size?
Well, so
to target?
Yeah, so, you know, and we're gonna, we're gonna come back with the kind of a, you know, if it's over an acre or, so there is the, the immediate need to identify sites is because of the arena.
Right.
And so there may be more sites eventually that you want to consider as, you know, good housing sites for an overlay. But our initial look is what we sort of described as a surgical, you know, look
Right.
identifying sites that seem to be available or with some degree of likelihood to develop within the eight-year cycle of the arena cycle, right? So beyond that horizon, we're not looking at for this initial overlay, I would say. But yeah, the sites are either of a, of a certain size, or I would say proximity to transit in the, in the example old line storage site.
Right.
And the one that's next across the, across Mission from that. And then in the Ostrich Farm, obviously, just because of the
Bust, bustle.
So just, oh, sorry, if you've done, just to clarify that this suitable sites inventory that we'll bring to HCD will have more sites than just these. These are the, the special sites that we're talking about for maybe special standards, but the overall inventory is going to have many more sites.
Yeah, and that's essentially going through, doing a survey of the entire city and looking at current zoning and identifying sites that might turn over within a period of time and listing those on the site because that is what is required by HCD for us literally to list site by site, what is included in that inventory. So that doesn't mean that it is going to turn over. It just means that the conditions are such that it's realistic to assume that it could in eight years. Right.
Else?
I'm done with my question.
Commissioner Dahl, any questions?
Um, I appreciate staff spending all the time with Richard and I going through this and researching and looking at other cities. I've learned a lot from it. I do have a question about the next steps. And I can't remember, has there been a community meeting on this subject? I, I forgot if we had had one or not, or if we're just going straight to the council after our next meeting.
So we do, so the meeting that we are holding on January 25th is going to be a housing meeting. So there is going to be a portion dedicated to the tenant protections item, for example. We are going to give an overview and an update on not only inclusionary housing, but also ADU, where we are in our ADU programs. And it will be an opportunity as well on Monday, the 25th, to invite the public to, you know, read the agenda packet and participate in public comment in the planning commission meeting, which will be the 26th the next day. So we are sensitive to, you know, to the sense of urgency to get an inclusionary housing policy just from a standpoint from the community and council has been requesting staff to bring one forward. And, and also its importance, obviously, in relation to the housing element.
So you'll give us an oral report on any comments that are relevant on the 26th then?
We can give you an oral report as well. We hope to have, you know, public comments submit, you know. They will be able to submit in writing or voicemail between the two meetings.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Tom?
Um, I echo Laura's comments about appreciating the time spent with staff going through a lot of these issues. I think these are some of the most important issues that, you know, for the next 20, 30 years of, really realistically, 20, 30 years of the city will have a huge impact on what the city will look like. And so I really am privileged, I guess, to sort of extend my term long enough to have some opportunity to have the voice in that. And so I am thankful to the commission for giving me that opportunity. And I think, you know, you'll go through it more with Joanna and Elizabeth and others and you all as a commission next time when I'm probably going to be a pumpkin again. But I think that, you know, there are very, I think the choices we're making here are the ones that I think that, you know, the city needs to embrace. I understand there's a desire from, by some in the city to say, we should leave this city the way it always is. And for this region and for South Pasadena itself, you know, cities grow, cities change. And I think the way we're looking at doing it is about the best way we can, given what we're trying to both protect, but also trying to accommodate the fact that there really isn't enough housing, there isn't enough of the housing we're talking about with this inclusionary ordinance. And so I, I think that's the way we kind of have to do it. It'll be a different looking city. But if, you know, but I don't think we can just sort of say, let's, let's, you know, take a snapshot of the city and leave it that way and leave it forever. And I think what we're doing though is a reasonable way to address it. So that's, that's what I would just say. Since I won't have a chance probably to say it as a member of the commission next time, that's, that's, that's my sense of it. It's a, it's a reasonable balancing of all of that, where that's the direction we need to move toward. I'll, I'll put it because I know that it's going to be some back and forth before you get to a final. But I really feel privileged to have the chance and I feel really happy that you all on the commission are the ones who are going to carry this forward because I have so much faith and confidence in all of you. So, thank you.
Commissioner Padilla.
That was so nice, Commissioner Tom. Very much appreciated. We will try to do you proud.
Thank you.
And lure you back as soon as it's possible. I thought it was a really nice recommendation the subcommittee made, or you all talked about, about getting developer input. I guess my question is, that can be a double-edged sword, but maybe it's more of a, because it is, I mean, it is helpful to get their perspective. Maybe my question is, do you think you'll be able to get the input obviously from developers that are enlightened, understand the context of South Pasadena, know how to do the right thing? So maybe my question is, is, does that seem like that's going to be viable? Because it seems like it could be really valuable to get their input if we know how to temper it and put it in context.
Yeah, you know, I kept my presentation so short just now. I didn't actually share that we, that Joanna and I and also the subcommittee this afternoon were able to talk to a couple of developers of recent projects, what, well, that, right, both of recent projects and one that's a soon-to-be-proposed project or projects being, being worked on at a site to get some insight into what is helpful, what is most helpful to them in in implementing projects with affordable housing. And none of what they said will be surprising to the commission, I'm sure. It, you know, they spoke about processes, certainty in processes, time, getting their projects through more quickly, being able to have some flexibility with standards, in particular parking and height as allowed through the state density bonus law. And so, but they did have some really good input, I think, and, and have helped us in some of the kind of fine tuning of some of the standards that we will be presenting and recommending on the 26th.
Yeah, absolutely. They've definitely added, you know, that layer of reality that planners need to hear, some back and forth as we were trying to, you know, draft policies. So we really appreciate the input and we'll continue to reach out. And we, you know, we've, we've had that invitation to continue to reach out, so we will.
Great. Thank you both.
I was wondering if you could, following up on Commissioner Padilla's suggestion, is there a way to send notices of this item, one of our next meeting to some developers or call them or email them or do some special outreach to some of the housing developers that we've seen over the past couple of years so that they're, you know, completely aware and could comment on it. Oops, I lost my video.
I think that's a great idea. We have the beginnings of an email list that basically comes from all the people who've communicated with staff through the housing element email. And I can speak with Joanna and Kanika and get some of the names of developers who we can add to that list. And, and send them specifically, send them the notice of the 26th meeting.
Yeah, I just want to thank you all for, for working on this. I'm excited to hear what you come up with and I also do support that I think all stakeholders, including, you know, but that would include developers, need to kind of be, have their opinions heard. So that's great to hear that you're doing that as well. Um, okay, I'd like at this time, do we need to open a public hearing for this?
No, it's just an update.
Okay. And we don't need any kind of motion because we're just going to hear from, hear back on January 16th, or January 26th, sorry.
Yeah.
Well, thank you so much for your work on this, Elizabeth.
Okay, it's been my pleasure.
Canika, do you have a question?
Yes, I do have something. I thought one of the, I know was that we're going to ask the commission to do, make a motion to recommend staff to provide information to HCD for consultation on density bonus.
You're, you're right. Thank you, Kanika.
Yeah. I saw it here and I wasn't quite sure if we needed that or not. Okay.
You know, you can just provide that direction. You don't have to take a full motion and give a formal, you know, take a formal action. This is mainly a receive and file and an update of where we're at. And the staff report is suggesting that we're at a step where with the development of the inclusionary housing ordinance and maybe the use of a density bonus ordinance or strategy, it, it might be a good time to talk to HCD and see if they're on board. If we do these things, if they're more inclined to allow us to, you know, do our unit count for our suitable sites inventory with the two tools that we're using. And so I think if you just give that direction to staff, they'll understand it.
So, okay, is everyone in agreement that we are, it would be a, our recommendation that the, that staff reach out and confer with HCD regarding arena approach, using the inclusionary density bonus strategy to develop the housing elements suitable site inventory? I see every commissioner's head nodding. So that is, I'm going to say that's a unanimous consensus that the commission does, would like staff or recommends to staff to so reach out and confer.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Kanika, for that reminder.
Okay. Perfect. Next, it is time to hear from our council liaison, Mayor Mahmoud, who was so patiently with us on all of our meetings for the last year. So Mayor Mahmoud, do you have anything to report or share?
Yes, I do. Several items. I'd like to specifically thank Commissioner Leesak. I especially appreciate his very common sense and I think helpful recommendation that the city prepare a template for landlord communications with their tenant in the event of substantial remodel. I think that makes eminent sense. I would also like to specifically thank the ad hoc arena committee consisting of residents Zen Tao, Mark Gallatin, Patrick Kirchner, Chair Braun and Commissioner Leesak, and especially Director Hancomer and Chair Braun, who made the presentation to the SCAG ad hoc arena committee. Unfortunately, as you probably know by now, just as with every other city that sought redress of its arena numbers, we met with no success, but this was something we had to do. I am still trying to contact our city's representative on the regional council to explore what potential there is for SCAG's initiation of litigation against HCD regarding their assignment of the 1.4 million housing units. I have not heard back yet, but I'm pursuing various avenues. I just read today that there is a continuing exodus of residents from all over the Calif, all over areas of California. And so in particular, I really think that demands reconsideration of the, I will say exceptionally optimistic numbers that we were assigned, that the SCAG region was assigned by HCD. So I hope to be able to provide you with more information at probably next month's meeting. I'm sad to say goodbye to Commissioner Richard Tom. I first met him years and years ago when he was helping to organize our city's community garden and he stepped in at a very critical time. And the community garden is such a gift. It is such a blessing and it is so vibrant. It is such a welcome place of respite and, and ecology for our residents that participate in it. And thank you so much, Richard, for your efforts in helping to get that. I would also note that in addition to his, his second tour, I think, of two terms on this planning commission, I'm very, very pleased to say and recognize that Richard is a member of the Clean Power Alliance's Community Advisory Committee. He is one of two representatives for the San Gabriel Valley Region. And we are still a young organization, but we're finally beginning to develop some reserves. And as we develop more reserves, we are able to do more and undertake more community projects. And I think it'll be, it'll continue to be really exciting endeavor, among other things. One of the things that I think is really exceptional about the Clean Power Alliance is that we have negotiated with some of our developers that they fund scholarships for residents in our area. And so the CAC has helped the board to decide how that scholarship money should be allocated. And there will be other, there have been and will continue to be other endeavors and there will be greater endeavors as the organization gets its sea legs. But thank you so much, Richard. You have been so generous with your time and such a valued member of not only this commission, but our entire community. I salute you, sir.
Thank, thank you very much, Mayor Mahmoud. Thank you.
I finally have really enjoyed serving as your liaison very much this year. You are an incredibly talented, deliberate, very thoughtful and professional commission. And I've enjoyed it so much that one of the privileges of being mayor is that I get to recommend council liaison appointments. And so I have recommended my continued appointment this next year as your liaison. So I hope not to wear out my welcome, but you truly are exceptional. I think the city is definitely indebted to you because you are just so thoughtful in your questions. You are so knowledgeable. We really are so grateful for your participation on this commission. I really think you are way, way up there among all of the city's many. I think at this point, we have 14 or 15 commissions and committees and I would put you way, way up there. So thank you very much. That concludes my remarks.
Well, thank you, Mayor Mahmoud. We're just thrilled that you're going to be the liaison for the planning commission for the coming year. So that's, that's very exciting. And before I say anything about, you know, the great compliments I have for Commissioner Tom, I'm going to go around to the other commissioners and try to get their comments first. So Commissioner Dahl, do you have any comments or anything to share?
I have nothing except, of course, thank you, Richard, and goodbye again. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Tom. I've learned a lot from you during my, my short tenure compared to your amazing dedication. And let's have lunch when this is all over and we can get together. I'll buy lunch for you. Thank you.
That sounds good.
Vice Chair Lisak?
I, I feel like the last meeting I sent off Commissioner Tom, but I, you know, we, we've been talking for a while about having a retreat. So maybe next time, when we have our retreat, we can invite you and do it in person. Get some input from an alumnus at that point. And I'm interested in the Clean Power, I, I took a strange trip the past few days. I, I went to a project site, a very, very remote project site in Arizona. But I drove past, I drove through the Banning Pass, the, the wind power farm. And I also drove past a solar farm in the desert. So I applaud you on the Clean Power efforts. It's amazing to see some of the infrastructure that's going in now. So I'll leave my comments at that, but wish you well and hope to see her on town soon. After my, now I have to go into quarantine, so won't be seeing anybody for 10 days. Sorry to hear that.
And I'm going to have Commissioner Tom go last, but I, because I'm going to go next. And I would like to say, and I'm, I'm sorry, I wasn't at the last meeting, so I missed that send off, but I'm thrilled that you're back here today. I specifically asked Kanika, I'm like, is Richard going to be there today? So it's just been a joy serving with you. And you're just, I just want to echo some of the comments, your, your insights and your intellect and your experience and just your approach to problem solving. It's just been a real pleasure serving with you on the planning commission. And thank you for all you've done and continue, are continuing to do for the city. So, and I kind of like John's thought about, maybe we have like the planning commission alumni club or something. There's certainly been a lot going on. So thank you for your service. We will miss you. And I'll turn it over to you now.
All right. Like John said, I, I think I had thought that last one might be my, last meeting might be the last one. And, and I, what I was saying before, I mean, I think, you know, it's now been, I think, 2004 to 2012, and then 2015 now to 2020, 21. I was on cultural heritage before that. So I have put a lot of time into the city and I did it, as I said last time, because I love the city and I really care about what happens with the city. I know there are lots of people in the city who feel that same way. And I guess I'm, I've just tried to have, you know, a pragmatic view of what the, you know, what the city needs to have or what needs to happen with the city. Because again, I don't think cities can live under glass and not ever changing. So again, as I, as I had said before, I, I really had the privilege of working with all of you and also prior commissioners, you know, more, longer, I think, than, than most folks, certainly on the planning commission in the last 20 years or so. And so I've just, I've really been honored by the privilege of serving as a planning commissioner, having influence in terms of what happens in the city and moving it in the right direction, whether it was the community garden or whether it's now the Clean Power Alliance or this work on the planning commission. So I just am really incredibly appreciative to the council, to this commission, to the citizens of South Pasadena for the opportunity to serve. And I hope to have other opportunities to do that in the future because that's what I like to do. So thank you very much. I've enjoyed working with all of you and I'll miss you. I'm sorry I won't quite be there to see this housing element and the general plan through like I kind of hoped we would at an earlier point. But, but I know that you guys will do the right things with that and move the city in the right direction. So, so thank you and I will see you again, I'm sure. Thanks.
Thank you, Richard. Awesome job.
Thank you.
And then I just wanted, before I turn it over to staff for comments, I just wanted to echo Joanna's comments, or maybe it was Mayor Mahmoud's comments about really thanking Mark Gallatin and Zen and maybe Joanna, you're going to add something, Richard and, and John and the RENA Subcommittee was really amazing. And I would be remiss if I didn't also really thank Joanna for, she did amazing job on the appeal. I mean, it was really Joanna kind of took the laboring oar on that and Mark Gallatin, who took the oar on the rebuttal. And we did our best. We sort of figured it would be a futile effort, but we were sort of making, putting our best foot forward. And unfortunately, our appeal was denied, but there, but it's not dead. We are, so I'll leave that to Joanna. But I really did want to thank Joanna and our residents who participated on that because people put a lot of thought and a lot of work into that. So anyway, it was really, really appreciated by all. So on that, Joanna, comments from staff?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so about the RENA appeal, yeah, so we, we had our presentation, our appeal presentation on Monday, the 11th, with the rest of the San Gabriel Valley. And as you've noted, the rest of the San Gabriel Valley and, and us, we were all denied our appeals. So I, I want to say before I talk about the Ad-Hoc Committee, which was really a pleasure to work with, the one, the one bit of silver lining actually that I found in the experience, not only of our own hearing, but in watching many that came before us, was that the idea of pushing back on the, challenging the state's numbers is resonating across, you know, the southern region. And so, so much so that the panelists, the board, the appeal board members, you know, routinely talked about appeal after appeal, how their hands were tied by state law, but they heard, you know, from jurisdictions and were interested in organizing. And, and, and they actually recommended that any members of the public who were watching reach out to their state representatives to, so we can take this, this conversation to the state. So that, that to me was, was good, really, you know, was part of our aim and our appeal was to, was to garner support amongst others. And it sounds like others are already on board with that. So to the, to the Ad-Hoc Committee, yes, so to Chair Braun and Vice Chair Lisak, thank you. I mean, both of you put in, you know, work in the middle of the night, because I got the emails. Really, you know, we, we had a really intense effort for 45 days back in September and October to put this together. And then again, just this last week, a couple of weeks before the appeal. Appreciate both of your input as well. The Chair of the Cultural Heritage Commission, Mark Gallatin and Patrick Kirchner and Zen, that were really, you know, we had a great team. We had, we were well, well rounded. We brought a lot of expertise and interest and commitment to that. So it was my pleasure to work so closely with, with the commissioners and just members of the community on something that we all feel very passionate about. So I just wanted to say thank you again. And I also want to, I've already heard back from most of the committee that they're interested in helping us have this discussion with the state. So we will be reaching back out to all of you to, to ask for help and to, and we know that you're interested in doing so. So we really appreciate that, those efforts. I also want to thank Margaret Lynn. She's on leave right now, but she also was, you know, really integral to that 45 day push that we had before. And to Liz, who helped us over the finish line with our appeal hearing on Monday. So thank you. And also thank you, Mayor, for taking our charge of the ladder, as they say. So thank you. I also want to say, I mean, I, you know, the words that, that commissioners have put forth for Commissioner Tom, of course, I agree. I have to say, I don't know that I can call myself new to the city anymore because I've been here for more than a year. But, but it was, it was a pleasure. And I certainly, much of my education come from, came from this commission and especially from Commissioner Tom. Really appreciate the institutional knowledge that you've brought to the conversations, but also just in helping educate me and getting to know this community. I really appreciate it. It's obvious that you care very passionately about it. And, and I, and I don't think we're saying goodbye because you are, you're perfectly welcome to submit public comment on any item for not only the planning commission, but the city council. And we hope to, we hope to hear from you again. So with that, I just want to say thank you very much for your service. It's, staff appreciates it. I know that I'm speaking not just for myself, but for the rest of staff. Thank you and good luck.
Thank you.
And that, that concludes my comments. Oh, you're on mute.
Okay, then, yeah, thank you so much. We'll now proceed to adjourn the meeting. But before we adjourn, I want to remind everyone that we have a special planning commission meeting scheduled for January 26th at 6:30 PM. And one quick little thing that I just wanted to make clear is that with, with Commissioner Tom no longer being a commissioner, Commissioner Padilla will be stepping in as the alternate to the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance Subcommittee. And she'll be the member, I want to be with Commissioner Dahl? No, who's the first Commissioner Dahl? So Commissioner Dahl and Commissioner Padilla will be on that, on that committee. So I thank you to both of you for serving on that committee. That's, that's going to be a big job. So on that, I think we are adjourned. And again, a reminder, our next meeting is the special planning mission meeting for January 26th at 6:30 PM. Meeting is now adjourned. Thank you all.
Good night, everyone. Good night.